Let's see, the time is now seven eleven P M. Now state of form as present calling to order the city council regular meeting. Everyone please stand for invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Anderson.
May we bow our heads. Father God, we come before you right now, thank you for your goodness, your kindness and your mercies. Father, thank you for just allowing us to be here one more time. Father, we ask that you look upon this council, look upon these civil servants for their hard work and their sacrifice. Father, may you continually bless them. May you generously give to each of them wise and discerning hearts to skillfully govern the people of this city. Father, ask that you would give the mayor, the city leaders, the staff and the council wisdom. So that they may be able to solve problems, distinguish between right and wrong. And bring order and stability and prosperity to not only the people in the community, but to this city as a whole. In Jesus name I pray, amen.
Thank you, baby C. All right. Very happy to do this proclamation today. Get to honor and celebrate one of our partnerships with Austin Community College. Celebrating their 50th anniversary. All right, so dive right on in, our proclamation, whereas ACC opened its doors on September the 17th, nineteen seventy-three with one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six students and a hundred and seventy-seven faculty and staff. And whereas in the fifty years since its founding, ACC has served the central Texas community. Providing pathways to hundreds of thousands of high school students seeking access to college. Traditional college aid students seeking to transfer to four-year university. And adults seeking to scale up and advance in their career. And whereas over the years, ACC's service area has grown to a region that is geographically the size of Connecticut. Mr. Dunlop? That's your hometown? AC's big, ACC's bigger. With the taxing district that includes seven school districts, including Maynor ISD. Whereas ACC emphasizes hands-on, experiential and personalized learning opportunities. Establishing innovative facilities like incubators and in high-demand industries and the rail renowned, excuse me, the renowned accelerator learning lab. Whereas ACC has long been a leader providing free college to high school students through dual credit courses. Early college, early college high schools, which Maynor ISD has the highest producing number of associate's degrees in central Texas. Just throw that out there, shout out to Maynor ISD. Career academies, P-Tech programs, helping families save thousands in higher education costs. Increasing the college-born rates of high school graduates. And whereas ACC is recognized for its work to close equity gaps in higher education. And is one of the nation's achieving, nation's achieving the dream leader colleges for improving student outcomes. And elevating the importance of completion milestones. Whereas ACC was recognized and awarded the prestigious national seal of Alexan? Alex, that's, Alexia, Alexan? I'm still working on my pronunciations with, you know, because it's, I know what the award is. It's dinner with our Latino students and success rate with promoting them through and their success, so. I want to get away. Excellencia, there we go. For its high, high level of commitment and effort to successfully serve Latino students. And the college is proudly a Hispanic-serving institution. Whereas ACC is recognized by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. As having the best rate for academic transfer success for students seeking a bachelor's degree. And actually has several bachelor degree programs now in play for students and adults. Now therefore, Dr. Christopher Harvey, Mayor of the City of Maynor, Texas, and on behalf of the Maynor City Council. Do hereby proclaim Saturday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, as Austin Community College District Director. And the City of Maynor. And witness or of, I hereby intend to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Maynor to be affixed to the twen- this twentieth day, September twenty twenty-three. Dr. Christopher Harvey, Mayor of the City of Maynor. So we have some guests here from Austin Community College. Chris, if you want to say a few words and then introduce who you, who's here with you and then we can take some pictures.
Absolutely, thank you so much. My name is Dr. Christopher Servini. I am the Vice Chancellor of Community and Public Affairs for your Austin Community College District. I always say your Austin Community College District because we are your Austin Community College District. We are an open access institution. We are committed to providing pathways for students who come to us where at, from any walk of life. We are open to get them to the next level, whatever their, their choice may be. And so I want to recognize the ACC personnel who've come out to celebrate with you tonight. Who, who are here. We have Sonia Rendell Rangel, Cassie Fitzgerald, Savannah Rug, sorry, Savannah Rug. Geneva Monroe, Dr. Heather Elias, Ross Nelson. And Sergeant Anthony Andrew from our ACC District Police Department. And last but not least, I have only been at ACC for eight of those fifty years. There is somebody in the room who's been at ACC a lot longer than that. And I'm not going to say how many years, I'll let her say it. But Loretta Edelen, who is our Director of Community Engagement, I would be remiss if I didn't ask her to say just a few words.
Thank you, Dr. Servini. Also wanted to include, we also have a new member of our team, Cassie Fitzgerald. Has joined us this evening as well. Thank you so much and we certainly appreciate all the support that Maynor has provided to ACC in the past. And as Dr. Servini said, you are ACC. We are all ACC and we're only here because of the support that we receive and continue to receive from our constituents. So we certainly appreciate the ongoing support. And on a personal note, I have had the opportunity and certainly the pleasure to work with the mayor in various capacities with our G-Force. Where we had our students at Maynor High School, helping students to matriculate to college. As well as working in the summer for some of the programs, summer programs. That I think is a nonprofit venture that Dr. Harvey, other hat, has been wearing in the past. And so it's been a real pleasure and privilege to work with you. And we continue to look for opportunities to partner together because we are so much richer as a community when we work together. So thank you for your ongoing support for education in this community. And for your support, continued support of Austin Community College. Thank you.
Thank you. Come up, take some pictures.
I'll count them. I can stand up.
We stand back here.
I put a fixed version of this in home drive.
Oh, it's fine. I'm just showing that right here.
Why it has the fixed versions of all the others? Like all the other slides that have that whiteboard, I fixed it. Yeah, I put a, the new one in there.
I just want to make sure the backup is there.
All right. Let's jump right into public comments. Public comments, non-agenda items on the white card. Comments will be taken from audience on non-agenda related topics for a length of time, not to exceed three minutes per person. So on this one, and then on the yellow cards, comments will be taken from the audience on non-agenda and agenda items. Combined for a length of time, not to exceed five minutes total per person on all items. Except for public hearings, comments on public hearing. Items must be made when item comes before a council and not exceed two minutes per person. No action or discussion may be taken place, may be taken by council during public comments on non-agenda items. To address council, you have to remember to do the yellow card and white card prior to the meeting. And hand it to the City Secretary or designated. All right, let's start with let's see, Ms. Dell Davis.
Ah, thank you very much. I'm Jerry Dell Davis again. I met you all last month when I was here and I came back to speak again. I live in the Stonewater Community and I'm here to speak about the animal problem in Maynor. And all the dogs that roam our streets. On Sunday, the seventeenth, an emaciated dog was found. A neighbor asked if I could take the dog in. I did. After I got him home, I realized he also was urinating blood. Thankfully, Monday morning, Officer Foley was on duty. He was very helpful, came, picked up the dog, took the dog to AAC. And the dog did receive treatment, they did take the dog. He was wonderful. He has been immensely helpful when he can. His hands are very tied with what he can do. And that's understandable. We currently have two kennels. If they're full, nothing, he can't do anything, basically. So let me, sorry, lost my place. While animal control may not be the most important department in our police force. It's also very important to community safety. We have one animal control officer, two outdoor kennels, a budget of fifty-five hundred dollars. To serve an estimated twenty-five thousand people. Officer Foley has been very helpful when he can, we need five more of him. On September thirteenth, a pack of seven dogs passed my garage. School was letting out. I was able to secure the dogs in my backyard. Thankfully, through social media, did find the owners. She did pick up the dogs. She informed me she has ten total. Our city ordinance here in Maynor is five. We have ordinances that aren't enforced. They need to be enforced. When it's found out that a citizen has ten dogs. They should be fined, ticketed, whatever can be done. Maybe we can encourage them or help them to get less dogs. We allow sorry. Social media pages, if you look, if you follow any of these pages daily, dump dogs, lost dogs. Some are owned and the owners are found, a lot of them are not, they are dumped. They, it's up to the citizens, if our ACO is not on duty, it's up to us to figure it out. We have a lot of great businesses coming here. Will HEB be the one that will deal with the seven dogs when they come on the HEB property? That, at this point is what's going to happen. I was told on that day, he could do nothing. I could keep the dogs or I could let them go. In my neighborhood, seven dogs. That was my choice. Thankfully, I did find the owner. I wouldn't have let the seven dogs go in my neighborhood, that's a safety issue, definitely. We need more. I know we have a police station coming and plans in the future to have some type of animal services or animal shelter. We need something now, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lauren Moore.
Hi, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak, I Chief Fitz. I'm here with Jerry. We both are part of the same group that I started a year ago when I came here to speak to you guys. After my cat was killed by a dog that I was helping because no one would help me with the dog. And I was told that finding an ACO would help the problem, so emailed with Chief Fitz. I advertise all over my social media, share it with my friends. There were no doing of mine, we were able to hire an ACO and he's amazing. But like Jerry said, it's such a huge problem. The dog that she found was urinating blood that she wasn't able to help for, I actually found. He was also skin and bones filthy. I recently fostered three tiny puppies that were dumped in a cardboard box on the side of the road in one hundred and four degree heat in their own urine and feces that they could not escape. Austin Pets Alive Pass Program helped me out a lot with that, I agreed to foster, I raised three puppies with my own money for a month. And as of two days ago, they all found incredible homes. Jerry brought up some things, Jerry actually rescued the three puppies that I fostered, just like I rescued the one that she took. She did also mention the bringing the big businesses into Maynor. I've even been told before that we do kind of still have a small town mentality, even though we grow, which is expected when a town goes from five thousand to twenty-five thousand in ten years. But we are expecting to bring in lots of business that might try to make ourselves more of a larger metropolis. But at the same time, we do have packs of dogs roaming the street. We do have dog attacks. The one that happened, I know it was in Shadow Glen, which is not technically part of Maynor. But the piece on the news, you saw Maynor citizens saying this is a huge problem in our city. You know, and it aired on the local news. Lots of people reach out to me, sometimes I get calls that say, hey, are you the Maynor Dog Lady? And sometimes I can help and sometimes I can't, but I do my best. I coordinated with Austin Community Cats last fall, even though they don't technically come out here, I got them to come out and trap, neuter and release about six barrel cats living in the storm drain across from my house in Greenbury. So I'm willing to do any work that needs to be done, I've been doing it. They're just you know, there are things out of our control. And please someone tell me when my three minutes are up because I'll probably just keep going.
Yeah, twenty, fifteen seconds.
Okay, well then I want to thank you so much for your time. Chief Fitz, it's a pleasure seeing you again. And I hope everyone has a wonderful night, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you. And let's see, one more public comment, Mr. Robert.
Thank you, sir, my name's Robert Battle. If you want to really know what's going on in this city, I would suggest you go to my Facebook group called Maynor Community Coalition. I'm kicked off every other social site in town, I've been kicked off next door for a year, although I get back on within days. These people up here, we're looking at, they, last week, this agenda today is basically a repeat from the Planning and Zoning Committee. These people I'm looking at here, they have no idea what planning and zoning said, they have no idea what happened a week ago at the Planning and Zoning Committee about these exact same issues. I told you guys about two years ago how to do this and talk to each other. It's in the Public Open Meetings Act, it's on, I believe, page twenty-four, you have a message board, it has to be one click away from your homepage. And then they can talk to you and you can talk to them. Don't you think that might be helpful for our city? I certainly do. Because for one thing, we don't have a newspaper. So I'm encouraged that ACC is out here, I'd like to talk to their journalism class. Because what we have here is the Fox News of newspapers. They never print a bad word about you guys, never. You guys just did a Hispanic initiative or proclamation, but you can't even translate the agenda into Spanish. Maynor ISD, in case you didn't know it, sir, they translate into a hundred and thirty languages, so does the parks in Rec, Travis County. How come Maynor can only do one language? But you do lots of proclamations and don't do a dang thing for anybody. So by the way, I'm translating my initiatives into Spanish right now. And when they're done, I'm going to release those and try to get them certified, I want to have a special election. I want to elect a new council. I want the council to go to two-year events or two-year terms, not four-year. I want the council to be paid forty thousand dollars a year. And I want them to work during the day, like a real job, you guys treat us like it's a little bake sale. So just another curious thing, since you've taken away everybody's time just to punish me. But you don't mind punishing your whole community just to get back at me. So agenda item twenty, for instance, downtown strategic plan, we don't have a downtown, I wish you would stop using that phrase. These goofball planners came in and they heard us talk about downtown and they said, let's build it up, let's build it up, let's ruin it. Historic Old Manor is the only thing we have in this town. If we ruin our downtown, see, I said it, sorry, I take it back, historic Parson Street. If we ruin that and we destroy the cemetery with the ninety-five townhomes you guys want to put in. And then we ruin over here by the homestead, I rediscovered the homestead. You understand the homestead's right there. We do not want four hundred apartments there and so, by the way, I'm sorry, I missed the meeting that preceded this. We do not want to give our tax money to help these affordable housing developers. And I think it's utterly ridiculous of you guys to even think about that for a second without voting on that with the people. The people should vote on that. They don't need you to give away more money to developers like the nine million you gave Barth Timberman. And the twenty million, you gave away twenty million dollars. And now you whine about, we need more money, we need more money, maybe you shouldn't give away all this future money. That's hard earned money that we need to put roads and streets in. You keep talking about all these bond issues, I haven't heard one word about the interior roads at all. I hear the police station's going from a trailer to a sixty million dollar palace, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. So one other thing, in the budget, we also need more money because we've discovered another cemetery just to the west of our existing cemetery. It's called the Martin McBay Cemetery, it was half an acre in nineteen oh six, it was put in there as a cemetery. There's bodies underneath there and you know they're there, I've shown you pictures, I've shown every single one of you pictures of probable bodies underneath the townhomes. I haven't heard one peep about you. So that's going to be one of my initiatives too, is to get about three of these projects, a moratorium on them. And also parks, you have a choice of getting parks or park money. But Scott Dunlop, who's actually running the city, by the way. In case anyone doesn't know, this is Scott Dunlop City, you guys are pawns. You think and you feel like you're running things, you're not, okay? The Pedrones have been running the city into the ground for like eighty years. So you put in a subdivision and you do nothing for Old Manor. And by the way, it's supposed to be pronounced Manor. James Manor came with Sam Houston in eighteen thirty-two.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, thank you. We need to take back our, what used to be called the Colored School. You know, where the public library used to be? I know you decided that you worked for the school district, so you gave sixty thousand dollars for a summer reading program. That money should have gone to our library. Sixty thousand would have put it back open, it would have reinvigorated that. And instead you gave a third of that to Shadow Glen, they're not even in our, our city limits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Rucker, straight. You can have a seat. It's not your business meeting, or you can leave.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. So Senator Rucker, straight, we do not, we do not have a library, the county owns the library. That's out there over at Benny Fisher Park, that does not belong to the City of Maynor. So we'll make sure that we're clear about that, thank you mayor, for shaking your head back there, we don't own that facility. So we can't invest money into it. Just want to make sure we're all the same about what we do and what we don't. Moving forward, public hearing, conducted public hearing on fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-four, proposed property tax. Sir, if you're going to disrupt, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. Sir, if you're going to disrupt the meeting, I'm going to have to ask you to leave.
I'm sorry, she asked me a question.
I've asked you to sit down. Conduct a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, proposed property tax rate of the City of Maynor tax. Ms. Collins.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council. The information before you, the proposed tax rate is, the recommendation by city staff is to reduce tax rate to point six, seven, eight, nine. Based off of the two thousand twenty-three tax rate calculation worksheet that was provided in the first public hearing back in August, there has not been a change since that public hearing. The public hearing was originally conducted on August sixteenth.
Is that six, seven, six, three?
Point six, seven, eight, nine is the proposed tax rate, yes, sir.
Questions, comments, Council? Any questions, comments? Well, I'll say mine. It's still the same that I said last time and last year. What the increase is, the increase of costs and everything that we're trying to do for residents that they request in regards to facilities, increasing programs and staff, I just have a concern with dropping down so far where we don't know what the economy is going to look like. And then something happens and then we have to come back and ask the residents for an increase. And then we don't have what we need to give the residents in regards to what they're asking for. We agreed last year to do a progressive decrease, every year that I've been on council, the years prior, we've dropped the tax rate, we've been dropping that tax rate. And so I'm not, definitely not opposed to dropping, I know we have to do some, we have to drop. But if we go down that far, it may cripple us in some of that programs and services and staffing that we need hired. Especially, you know, we got more, we got requests all the time for us to hire more people. We just heard from the folks about the animal control, so if we go down too far, we're not going to ready to come back. Resident, it's rare when residents will say, hey, let me pay more, especially when we know at some point in time Travis County is going to come to the residents and ask for a bond for the county. And so for the things we need to do for our city. I just think point six, seven is too low to go at this point in time with everything that's going on. And yes, there are projects that we're considering. We created a resolution a couple of years ago to try to bring workforce housing and affordable housing. So that city workers, first responders, teachers, people that are struggling to find a place to live and do those things, that's why we created PFC. My concern again, is if we go down too far, we're going to be ready to come back. So I'd like, I would prefer for us to have the same type of solution, a brainstorm we did last year, so we don't have to drop the tax rate that far. My council members may or may not agree, that's just myself, because I'm looking at the big picture and I'm looking at where we're trying to go. And I've talked to my colleagues in other cities and most of the cities have not dropped down this far, they've done the necessary things to not drop down as far as well. So.
And again, the, the tax rate is being, is, was supported by the Budget Committee, which is consisted of Marianne Deja.
Yeah, I do understand that part.
And without, and just to clarify though, because the point six, seven, eight, nine is the highest that we could go currently. With our current debt rate and current O and M, the point six, seven, eight, nine is the de minimis rate, and that's the highest that we could actually go.
Okay.
At this point in time with what debt service we currently have.
I'm saying that we went through the same thing last year. I'm saying that we made changes so that we can, so that we wouldn't go beyond what it was last year, point seven, something?
Seven, four, one, one.
Point seven, four, one. We had same conversation last year and we, we committed last year to a slower decrease than. We said we would, we would decrease, but we said a smaller decrease per year because we knew the things that we were trying to do, the responses to the service requests and the growth that was happening here. So we didn't want to cut down too far and then we see what happens with the government. They're about to go on a special session again. And we don't know what they're going to come out and say and do and how that's going to impact taxes and, and put a burden on us. And so I just don't want us to be the only city that drops down that far when the rest of our cities have been trying are looking at what the legislature is doing and is being very conservative so they can be able to continue to do the programs and offer things that they're doing.
No, I completely understand. Even if we decrease it, unfortunately, we will still remain the highest in central Texas.
Well, and we're the highest in central Texas. It's powerful what it is. We're the highest because we also don't have our sales counts. Our sales tax goes to Capital Metro. And so when we're looking at all the economic development tools that every other city has, our, our city's sales tax goes, a good portion of it goes to Capital Metro. So we're talking about economic development.
Yes, sir, I have to note it.
Things that we need to do. We don't have that economic mechanism. So, and for many years, we've resided on at the law. And so if we don't pivot and begin to look at economic development and bring in commercial and other entities to carry, to start carrying the load of taxes, then the burden stays on the residents. So the key is to have a gradual decrease so that we can bring in more taxpayers that pay more taxes so we can release that burden at a proper time for the residents, not dropping it in and out. We can't do anything to provide the services for the community. So it has to be a gradual decrease. If we keep, if we drop this many percentage points with so many unknowns in the legislature, it could come back to hurt us. We won't be able to do some things we need to do in regards to more public facilities, more services, the departments that we're, that we're needing to see in the future. We don't know how bad things are going to be with the legislature. So I get it. I hear it. You know, I've talked with, with our colleagues in, in other cities. And that's all, that's been everyone's advice is the gradual so that we can be safe and ensure that the programs we want to do is there. So, Council? That's where I stand on it. We all have your, you know, your choices in, in the matter. But that's, that's the research that I spent since the last time this was brought fourth, I guess in August, when we had those conversations. So I understand that if we look at the problem in isolation, that we can definitely see how reducing the tax rate as much as good and so forth. But if we step back and look at our previous commitments to our comprehensive plan, to acquire land, to bring in more businesses, retail, job opportunities, understanding we do not have the ADCs, the four As and the four Bs to offset those costs and provide those incentives that puts a lot on us and a decreased tax rate to try to continue to maintain.
Any other questions, comments? If there are none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I think I wanted to say on, not on behalf of the Budget Committee, but as being a person on the Budget Committee and understanding that we did have to make a lower to go with the de minimis rate for right now. But I appreciate everything that the mayor is saying because I, I feel like that's very true. And that would be something that could affect our city. It would have been really great to have heard from our community also during this public hearing to just hear how this would impact, impact your personal lives with being able to pay this new rate because it is lower. But, but knowing that there could be an alternative that would happen in between, like we're using this, what's for the benefit, we, council, we want to do for what's good for the city as a whole, but also as individuals, as residents, as we all are. But knowing that the tax rate is lower is definitely something to appreciate, starting in, you know, the new fiscal year to appreciate, but then also the other piece to that. So I really would have loved to have heard, you know, what they say because we're going with our financial director. She definitely did what she had to do according to the rules that's given to her. But if there was some other alternatives, I'm sure Lydia would have brought it to us so that we could meet that. So we can both win on both ends for this time.
No, there were other alternatives. We just didn't go that path as a city. And so I just want, so I want to make clear as, yes, we'll see some savings, but we have to think long-term as a city, not like the year to year. And, and that's my concern is that if, when we made a, a long-term decision last year, this year we came around and made a right now decision. You can't, we can't run like that. We can't run year to year when we have a long-term plan, a long-term fiscal year. That was the biggest thing we've been working on for the last few years is to look longitudinal, to, to forecast out where we want to be. So we brought in the people to look at where we need to be at for staffing from now to twenty fifty. We have a comprehensive plan. We brought in the, the definitely, the other pieces where, where we looked at where we're going to have certain departments, where we're going to bring in. And, you know, departments we don't have now, the staffing, the cost for those things. And so you can't do that, but also you can't bring those things in and then aggressively drop your tax rate. You just can't do it. It's just not physically possible. Yes, people will be happy for a year. But then when they come back around, they ask, when is, when are we going to get those services? When are we going to get those programs? We're going to say, well, we gave you financial relief this year. And if you want to get it sooner, we're going to have to ask you to raise the tax rate so we can provide those things. And that's what we're doing. And that's what, and that's, it's hard to, it's harder to go up when you've already gone down too far. You can't go back. And that's what, that's going to be a harder sale to the people to say, hey, we gave you two hundred forty dollars this year. We gave you three hundred dollars back this year. Now, next year, what, because we don't know what they're going to do. Next year, we need you to pay three fifty more because you're wanting us to expedite that process to give you that park and rec department, to give you some more people for animal control, to give you all those kinds of things. So you don't drop down. You should, we should never drop down. If it was, if it was possible to stay the same, that would have been a better thing to do. But we know that right now the legislative, there's a political situation that's happening. And, and we know that this is not, and not all of the, the folks there are favorable for cities. And so when we make our financial decisions, we have to make our financial decisions with that cautionary mindset that if we drop down too far now, the political game that's being played may cost us with the things we're trying to do for our residents. We're not playing politics. We're playing people. We're trying to do what we need to do for people here. But if we don't pay attention to the politics that are happening, we can cut our finances and not be able to do what we want to do for the people here. You can't, we can't jump into the affordable housing with, with the strength that we want to be able to do and offer the level of affordable housing, the level of workforce housing opportunities if we take all of our financial tools away. We only have our tax rate because of our, our obligations. And we went to the voters and asked the voters to support us with getting those, the sales tax dollars back from Metro. And the voters said they want to keep those dollars there. So this is all we have. So if we keep dropping down without thinking about the big picture, we're voted to think about the big picture. That's just my, that's my stance on it. We're voted to think the big picture. We're voted here to help guide and ensure the things that we're asking people for. Or the things that the people are asking us for, that we give our city manager and the team the necessary tools to accomplish those things. And so I, I understand the natural way of, you know, adjusting the budget to meet what the state is asking. Also know what other cities have done to ensure that they didn't drop their rate that much. So there are the tools that we could do. There's other ways we could approach it.
And I'll take a motion because I don't want to prolong, I don't want to hold us here in the night. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Mayor, Council?
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Well, motion for my councilwoman, that's why to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Councilmember Randall. Any questions to the motion? Any questions in the motion? Being not all in favor? Posits and passes. Moving on, conduct a public hearing on the twenty fiscal twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposed annual budget of the city of Maynor, Texas. We have a public comment, Mr. Robert. And, sir, you have no? Public comments have two minutes for all those that are speaking during public comment. And go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Robert Battle. If you happen to be at any of the budgetary hearings, you have been embarrassed by the lack of questions posed by our city council. And Deja Hill had a good point. This stuff should be town hall type things. And the budget should go into depth at the second level. It's very hard to make a decision from a summary category. We need to know the detail, okay? So I'd only have a couple of questions here. I want to let people know that we have five hundred ninety-three thousand dollars in our hotel occupancy tax fund for tourism and other types of activities. I can think of like ten of these in like thirty minutes. How come you guys can't think of a single thing hardly? Also in the park, we have six hundred seventy-two thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. You guys can't put a dog running in ten years and you have almost seven hundred thousand dollars. I had a free disc golf course where you put in, you couldn't even put in a free one. Maybe if you guys didn't give away like thirty million dollars, we'd have more money to do some of this stuff in the budget that you were just mentioning. What I would like for an answer for, this is a public hearing. The theory is I can ask a question as a citizen and I get an answer from the staff person or from, or from yours. So I'd like an answer to this question is, I'd like to know more about the admin fund, three hundred thousand dollars that's for community activities. Who is in charge of that fund and how do I ask for that to get some money for our community? If you would answer that, Lydia would appreciate it, or perhaps the mayor can answer it. That's the three hundred thousand in the admin fund.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll be happy. You have to, I answered your question.
Will I get an answer?
Yeah, I said you can have it. I, I would answer your question.
Okay, great.
All right, so I don't remember how many years ago it was. Two, maybe three years ago now. The three, thank you. Council was wanting to create and start the process of setting aside funds so that we could do programming and provide opportunities to nonprofits and, and so forth. And so one of the things we committed to doing was setting aside some dollars. I think we shaded out a budget. Was it twenty nineteen or twenty twenty year, twenty twenty year before the pandemic? We shaded out, we started trying to carve out in earmarked money to just kind of set aside as we continue to work and build out a planning place to screen and review organizations that could come to us and ask for funding for youth and community programs. During that process, we decided to earmark, I think up to, I think the language is up to a hundred thousand dollars to support without the school program. And hearing from our Travis County Commissioner, Jeff Trevino, talking about the importance of providing safe out school programs, summer programs. That was the decision the council to earmark up to a hundred thousand or not three hundred thousand for districts in the area to be able to make a request and provide their program. In which I wanted to request was for sixty thousand dollars to open from, Chief Gong that I think came from the school district along with once, a couple of librarians here. And we talked about the summer reader library program that we had done years past where they have the reading on the go bus and they opened up the libraries and did some summer opportunities for kids to have safe summer spaces to go. They have free breakfast and free lunch and those kinds of things. So that was, I think, the first use of the funds. I do know we're still, we haven't yet finished the, the vending part for nonprofits. But that too was available for districts in the area to apply for. And we're still working on the nonprofit piece. Ensuring that they're approved and vetted through RMS, have insurance and some other components. And then we'll be creating the process in which they can apply to provide those services. So that was what we carved out, was three hundred thousand dollars for that opportunity. And we have our criteria set for nonprofits to apply. It will be published out. And then people will see our priorities and then they can be able to apply to provide, to receive those funds to meet those priorities.
Who do we apply to?
It's not, it hasn't been put out yet. When it's put out?
It's been like three years and you still don't, okay. I'll take that as a nominee.
All right. Let's see, that's the only public hearing request on that one. Council members, you got questions about the budget?
I'm not sure if this makes a difference, but with the budget, I'm also from listening to what some of our residents were saying earlier about the only fifty-five hundred dollars, I guess, is allocated for animal control services. Is that? Where does that number fall?
We actually increased it this year.
Okay, I wasn't sure if there was a number of the, what that actual number was.
And that's kind of misleading because those funds that are in that line item are for very specific things. Other things, including the officer's salary, his overtime, his training, and some even other equipments, his vehicle maintenance, all fall other places within the police budget. So although that one line item says we only put five thousand dollars towards animal control, that is slightly misleading. That, that is very, for very specific things and functions that that, that our animal control officer does.
Thank you for the clarification.
Was there anything you wanted to highlight or felt you needed to highlight?
Not really. I had gone over it page by page at the last meeting. The partnership, I guess, just the highlighted for each department. Staffing, the proposed budget includes a new position for a meter technician, two construction inspectors, three wastewater crewmen. The employee compensation that was approved by council on August second is also included in here as well as the recommended title changes. There is a three percent cost of living for all full-time positions, whether they're filled or not filled. The CPI index as of July, in July, was four point nine percent. We have a total of a hundred and eighteen positions, a hundred and fifteen are full. Ninety-one are only filled, which leaves us with quite a few to go ahead and get filled this year. For admin, we did increase the right-of-way purchases for which ties back to the comprehensive plan implementation T three for the streets, and also for admin was the, a program called Laser Fish. That was, it's an internal use program for records management for the streets department. It includes seven hundred thousand dollar investment in street maintenance and improvements. This amount will go towards Blake Maynor Road. There is an increase of a hundred thousand for street repairs relating back to the comp plan implementation T sixteen. Increase of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand for the stormwater master plan tying back to the comprehensive plan implementation IF three. Development services, they had requested a land planning use fiscal analysis. That's ties back to comprehensive plan implementation LU ten. There's also an increase to contracted building inspection services. We do have a current position that is open. If that's, once that is filled, then the GL for the building inspection services will, will come back down. There's also a request for online inter- Uh, there's also a request for online interactive, uh, public portal for city maps. For the parks, uh, we had an increase to the cemetery, uh, repairs and maintenance, uh, that was approved back, uh, for city council meeting on August second. Uh, an increase to engineering services and contracted services, uh, tying back to the comprehensive plan implementation PR nine. Um, there are design ideas for the splash pad. Um, I'm not sure when the parks committee is going to, um, come back, uh, with a recommendation per council with, um, the splash pad idea, uh, designs and design ideas for an inclusive park, um, which are tying back to comprehensive plan PR two-four and, um, PR two-two. Uh, grant development services is preparing a parks master plan, um, and also coming up with grant funding. Uh, that's comprehensive plan implementation PR nine, twelve, fifteen, forty-two and forty-five. Uh, the police department is requesting for an increase in repairs to the police department building, existing police department building. Uh, an increase of fifteen percent to Travis County Dispatching Services. You'll see two new line items, um, in the detail that was, uh, provided to council. Uh, line item labeled K nine unit and then also the line item for CTRS, which stands for Central Texas Regional SWAT. To the comprehensive plan implementation ED one, three, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one and twenty-two. Uh, the no change for community development services, human resources. There is a new line item for marketing material. That'll be, um, utilized once we have our branding, uh, finalized. Um, Public Works is requesting two new positions, as stated earlier, uh, two construction inspectors. They're also requesting an increase to the repair for the Miller Building, uh, for roof and roof and floor repairs. Uh, the water department is increasing for the right-of-way, um, acquisition for infrastructure. Uh, increase in water testing, increase in engineering services for the water master plan, which ties back to the comprehensive plan implementation IF six. And also an increase for the capital outlight, greater than five thousand for the water tank purchase. This was approved by council on July fifth, twenty twenty-three. Um, the wastewater department, uh, is asking for an increase in repairs to the pump house. This is a building that is loc, a structure that is located behind the police department. Also an increase to engineering services for the INI program phase two and for the wastewater master programs with, um, tying back to the comprehensive plan implementation IF nineteen.
Is there any other questions or information that um, needs to be further explained to you all, council member?
What repairs were needed for the police station?
Hold on, let me, I don't have the whole list in front of me, but, um, with this most recent rain, we have, uh, several new waterfalls in the police department. So we will likely be putting on another roof. Uh, there's substantial, uh, um, foundation repairs. If you look down the hallway, the hallway now goes like this. Um, I think that's also probably contributing to the failure of the roof system. Um, we have, I think, four of the six air conditioner units, uh, will probably need to be replaced before this next, uh, summer. Um, I, I can probably go on and on. The list is extremely long.
Other questions? Uh, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion that we co- close the public hearing.
Well, motion for by councilwoman Mesmer, is there a second?
A second.
Second by councilwoman Wallace. Any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Being that all in favor? Pose. Motion passed unanimously. Conduct a public hearing on ordinance, mending chapter fourteen zoning of the, uh, main code of, uh, ordinances to modify provisions for the residential land, uh, use, uh, table rel- relating to single-family attached, two units and single-family attached, three or more units industrializing house, housing standards and office commercial and institutional architecture standards. Um, go ahead, Mr. Dunlop.
Right, uh, evening, Mayor Council. Um, so this ordinance, um, it's mostly actually just a cleanup ordinance, um, three of the four provisions. Um, just kind of cleaning up some last, from our last ordinance we did back in April, um, and it's from recent actions that you all took. Um, so again, it's a small one. And so in the ordinance, section three, it, uh, it permits two family dwellings within townhome zoning. And so that was in the previous ordinance, uh, and it was approved by the planning commission on first reading and by you all on first reading. Um, but on second reading, you had a slightly older version of the ordinance. And so it actually was approved and signed, had, uh, some typos in it. Um, so what the intent was didn't actually end up happening. And so this cleans that up. And so, uh, just permits two family dwellings within townhome zoning. Um, section four is related to that same thing. It's another cleanup related to the two family and townhome zoning. Um, section five, that relates to the industrialized housing. So you may recall, um, those provisions that were in our zoning code related to the architectural and building standards for industrialized or modular, modular housing was moved from zoning code to the building code to, uh, chapter three. And so this just updates the zoning code to reference that those standards are now in chapter three of our, um, code ordinances. And then, uh, the last section, um, section six, that relates to commercial office and institutional buildings, if they are a thousand square feet or less. Um, they are exempt from our articulation standards, so horizontal and vertical articulation. Uh, because when the buildings get that small, the offsets become a little, um, harder to achieve. And maybe like a little, kind of, not as aesthetic, uh, it doesn't really achieve the goals. Um, so the request was to just exempt buildings that are less than a thousand square feet from those articulation standards.
Thanks, sir. Um, any question, comments or, uh, motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing on item number three.
Uh, motion number four, any questions to the, um, is there a second? Motion for my councilwoman Wallace. Any, is there a second?
A second.
Second by councilmember Moreno. Any questions to the motion? No questions to the motion. All in favor? Pose. Motion passed unanimously. Number four, conducted public hearing on ordinance, uh, for the Okra Track Development, uh, final plan, unit development, uh, site plan. Three hundred and thirty-one lots on one hundred and thirteen point four acres more or less and being located at one four four one eight north. Now from nine seven three Main or Texas. Uh, Mr. Robert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Robert Battle. Uh, this is also one that was just on the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'd like to make a suggestion that the day after planning and zoning, our IT department puts the recording of that meeting on our website within twenty-four hours. Within twenty-four hours of this meeting, today's video should be up. Then you guys could go look at this and you would learn what the Planning and Zoning Commissioner said and what I said and another half a dozen other people said. This is Okra. May I, will you pull up the site plan, please? Scott Dunlop has invented a new category of parkland called OS parkland. There's no such thing. Yevia? Can we pull up this site plan, please?
So you need to address your comments to us.
Okay.
So talk to me.
Can you pull up the site plan?
You're not going to be disrespectful in how you talk to me. So that's going to be your final warning for the evening.
Oh, my gosh, I'm scared. I'm really scared. Can we see that, the site plan, please?
You can ask your question.
Pardon me?
You can ask your question. Then we do a presentations and we'll answer your question.
This is a public hearing. I'd like an answer.
You have to answer your question first.
There's no such thing as OS parkland. Why is it in here? There's no, we're not even, still not seeing it. Okay, there's some little teeny parks in here. I want to see the roads going to the park because the parked little postage stamp things need parking there. So that people, when we go to the park, guess what? We have a place to park. OS parkland is an invention of Scott Dunlop, so they can get out of paying two hundred and fifty thousand worth of In Lou Park fees that they once upon a time said they were going to pay. So I want to know how much In Lou Park fees are they going to pay? If you don't mind asking them that, sir, I'd really be impressed. Putting a long trail and calling it a park just because it connects to another long trail, pardon me?
That's your time.
Okay, can you answer my question now, please? How much money are they putting in the park fees?
Thank you. We'll get your answer for you.
Pardon me?
We will get your answer for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Snell?
Hello, thank you. My name is Tyler Snell. Um, I went to the Planning, Zoning Commission last week, spoke a little bit about this with the commission there. Um, also spoke with the developer about it as well. Um, the, there was only one main issue that we, that I had, um. Otherwise, I think it's great that we're continuing to develop and get more, uh, parkland and park areas. Um, between the pre- prelim, preliminary plan and the final, there was just some differences in terms of where a proposed dog park in the area is planned for. Um, and I believe this is hopefully going to be addressed by the developer. They talked about it last week during the commission meeting. Um, but there was a statement that the dog park could be within the detention pond. We were just suggesting not having a dog park within a detention pond because we've, I've seen in the past where that becomes just an open field that isn't really an actual dog park. Um, I believe that's hopefully going to be fixed. Um, the commission also talked about eliminating all amenities within the detention pond, and that was definitely not the intent. We still want trails and areas to walk around. Um, we don't want to eliminate all the amenities just to specify that nothing be within the detention pond because that kind of defeats the purpose of it. Um, and then there was some discussion on increasing some of the parking space in that area. Um, like some of the people have mentioned earlier in this meeting, there are a lot of dogs in the city, but not a lot of spaces to take those dogs. Um, I think it's great that they're proposing to put a dog park here, but maybe increasing the parking for that. Um, or specifying a, any amount of size for that. Um, I know it said minimum ten thousand. I think it's ten thousand feet. Um, that's great, but if that is the only dog park or area for people to take their dogs in the city, it's going to become overwhelmed. Um, so increasing the parking space, spaces may help in that. Again, completely in support of it, but just wanted to bring those things to the commission and make sure that you as a city council were as well, were aware of that as well, so.
Thank you, sir. That's your time. Uh, quick question. Um, you didn't, can you make sure you get this before you leave and put in your address and information to one field app?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Dunlop? When you get to it, can you be sure to answer the In Lou fee's part?
Sure. Uh, so with a pud, I mean, that's more of a design your own zoning. That's why developers, I mean, they might say OS parkland, but that's just their way of referencing what is going to be dedicated to the city. Um, it's not that they're, they don't have to follow exactly what's in our code in terms of the same designations. They, you create your own zoning, your own development standards. Um, you know, sometimes they're closely matched or are the same as our development standards. Other times they are quite different. Um, in this case, they are pretty close to our standards. It just happens that this one says they're parkland. They gave it a designation OS. Doesn't mean anything. Um, but they do meet our parkland, uh, requirements and then, you know, they're providing the regional trails and other spaces to their, um, you know, the open space floodplain. Um, so there's more open space and then non-floodplain parkland. And so it's all provided. So there is no In Lou fee that's been requested by the city or proposed by the developer. I don't want to get too into it because Rachel, she does have a presentation. Sometimes I always steal all the thunder from the presentation, but, um, it is the same. The preliminary pud is similar to, or this final pud is similar to the preliminary pud that you've all seen. Um, there were some updates to, um, trail connections, um, and a crossing crosswalk that was in there. And then, um, as Tyler mentioned, the, um, the planning commission did recommend that amenities not be within detention. Um, and there could be clarification that that doesn't necessarily include trails. So if there was a trail that went around the detention pond, um, but was technically within the detention area, that that would still be permitted. Uh, the planning commission's intent was related, you know, the, the playscapes and the dog park and, um, those more active amenities wouldn't be in detention. And that isn't the developer's plan, but, um, that was one of their requests, the planning commission. Um, they also wanted to clarify that the playscapes that are proposed have shade structures. Um, and that they set a few additional parking spaces. So there are twenty that are proposed and you'll see those in the presentation. Um, and so they didn't specify a, a number. They just said a few. So that could be five, maybe another ten more. Um, and then also that the dog park is fenced. It's planned to be fenced, but then also that it is. Um, and so the planning commission did approve this, uh, when they voted on it with those recommendations. If you have other questions, I can answer them or there's a presentation with this.
Okay, we'll go to the presentation.
Okay.
Good evening, council. My name is Rachel Shanks. I'm the developer of the Okra Track. I have the full presentation, but I was just going to kind of cover the differences. But if you guys had other questions kind of regarding my original one, I have that. So I'm happy to go back through it. Just kind of an overcap. Um, it's a hundred and thirteen acres. It was brought into the city, I think, around two thousand sixteen. Uh, zone C two, we're proposing mixed-use residential with some commercial along FM nine seven. Maybe, no? Um, pud parkland request. So, uh, there was a quest for a painted crosswalk at Caldera Way, which, uh, connects to Shadow Glen, just because the regional trail will cross over that road. And so it's identified as people will be walking that way. Um, Shadow Glen also has a sidewalk that goes to nowhere. So we'll be picking up that sidewalk and continuing it up to connect it to our commercial, um, properties. Um, parkland internal, just to kind of recap, and I do have a parkland concept now. So I guess for Robert's comments, um, in our pud, we have open space, which is OS. That is detention. That is parkland and that is floodplain. So they're all open space, but they identify different things. And so they're labeled as open space, but then identified further as if it's parkland, if it's detention. And because our parkland, our detention is not included in our parkland, we have broken it out further. So that is why that is written like that. Um, we have eight point eight acres. Again, detention is not included. And the amenities, two playgrounds, uh, right now it's a minimum of tw- twenty parking spaces, dog park, basketball court and pavilion. Um, here's our parkland concept. So this is the, the main boulevard. Uh, this will be Silent Falls Parkway coming through. So the larger park will be with the parking spaces, so about twenty parking spaces, the two playgrounds. Uh, my goal is to have the detention designed in a way where it's a little bit more organic. It's not a box with concrete. And so while I'm not using it as my parklands and I want it to still be able to be utilized by the, uh, community. And so playground will go around it, um, and it'll be designed in a way that, you know, if it's not raining or muddy, somebody could kick a basketball or a soccer ball around, um, but again, not included in the parkland. And then up to the north, we right now have an acre dog park. It will be fenced in and I'm happy to add, update the section of my pud to specify that. And then I think section three on the pud, just including that all of these minis will be out of. just including that all of these minis will be out of, all the structures will be out of detention, so you guys just don't have to worry about that concern. I have additional parking, so in the back, this is kind of along Willbarger Creek, we kind of have a bend in the road, and this will be right next to the regional trail. My goal is to bump out that road a little bit more, allow for parallel parking. So if people wanna come and hop on the regional trail and didn't wanna walk through the entire neighborhood, they can come, park out there and be off of the road. And additional, we'll have like another little two-acre park with some benches, and it has an existing pond out there. So just kind of unify it and make an additional space for people to utilize. You have any questions on that?
I have a question. Sorry, I have a question. The black line that's in this picture, is that just to outline the, the end of your space?
Yes.
Actually, okay.
Yes, it's like very faint, but you can kinda see the trail, I mean, we haven't defined the trail yet. We'll have to connect to Shadow Glen's trail and connect to Monarch's trail, so we're waiting for those files to design our trail.
I was just wondering if it was a fence or not.
No, it's, yeah.
And so am I understanding that you are in favor of the four recommendations?
Yes, I mean, those were my intent, I'm happy to make those in written writing, so you guys don't have to worry about me going back on that. I was planning on doing shade structures, kind of like the park on Burnett Street, just kind of over, I don't want little kids burning their little toes on metal. So, I was planning on doing that, and of course, our dog park is on a boulevard, so it needs to be fenced in, dogs do not need to be running free. I need to look at the parking, I think I can add a bit more, but I will have to kinda, I don't wanna make my park become parking, and I wanna still design it where I can do landscaping and make it pretty, so I'm still kind of playing with that on how many spaces I can add. But I will look into that and see what I can do on that front.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I'd like to thank y'all for adding the basketball court.
Yes.
Questions, comments, or a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing for item number four.
Well, a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace is there?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Weir, any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Being none, all in favor, pause, motion passes, yes, thank you, ma'am. Let's see, moving right along to number five, conducting public hearing on an ordinance for Manor Heights. Carry on, subdivision plan unit, the development PUD amendment located at one three two zero one, Old Kimbrough Road, Maine of Texas, and Mr. Robert.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, my name's Robert Battle, can we pull up that site plan, please?
Go ahead, sir.
Pardon me?
Go ahead and ask your questions, or give us your comments.
My comment was, can we pull up the site plan?
We're here to hear your comments, not for you direct.
So you're here for the people to come talk without showing people what we're talking about? There was some, thank you, was that so hard? Was that really so hard?
Thank you, sir, you can have a seat.
I'd like to see that and talk.
No, we're done.
Did I hurt your feelings?
We're talking disrespect, have a seat, and you can, and we'll move on with our meeting. Have a seat. Have a seat.
Incredible.
We're not gonna be disrespectful to council, this is our business meeting.
Was that disrespectful to ask to pull up?
Have a seat. Let's see, we have Alex? Same thing with Tyler? Okay, Mister Dunlop?
So this is the, the Manor Heights Caroline Development, and so this is their PUD amendment. So there's a couple modifications to the PUD. The first one is there's just under nine and a half acres that they're taking from what was leftover land. So it was open space, it wasn't dedicated Parkland, it wasn't planned for anything. And requesting to move that to commercial. So it's down there near the intersection of Bodark and Kimbrough. And so there was some soil contamination from the prior use of the property as a gun range. And so they couldn't use it as residential, cuz they would require a lot of soil remediation. But they are able to remediate it enough to have commercial use on it. So the developer, the property owner is requesting to, you know, move that now into commercial use, so they can use the property, generate, you know, sales tax and, you know, services for the community, rather than just having it at sort of a vacant, underdeveloped field. And with that request, the city, we requested that their uses for neighborhood business and C two, all their permitted and conditional uses be moved to basically what our current code is. Cuz the Manor Heights PUD was done twenty eighteen, maybe something like that. And so our standards have changed, I recall back in twenty twenty, we basically rewrote our entire zoning code. And so they have changed all of their permitted conditional and specific uses within the commercial areas of the PUD to match what our current code is. So as they start to develop, they'll develop in accordance, mostly in accordance with sort of the other areas that aren't under the PUD, so the rest of the city, it's a little more cohesive, so they're not getting sort of these older vested uses, so. Uh, one instance, maybe like gas stations were permitted by right, now they require specific use permit. So there's sort of something like that, and all the types of land use conditions we have on certain commercial uses apply now too, and sort of design standards. So that was all in there. Then they modified some of the tables, cuz they're taking the, that open space, that vacant land, making it commercial, so they just had to update tables. And then the last one relates to the residential side. So Richmond American, which is one of the home builders in there, they've been, or started constructing some homes that have double-height garages, also called RV garages. I don't know if you've been through the community, you've seen them, they're just, you know, tall garages. And they weren't specifically prohibited in the PUD, cuz there are design standards in the PUD for garages. And it didn't say you couldn't do it, but it didn't say you could do it either. And so they, some of their permits were issued until we determined that, you know, because they weren't expressly permitted, that they were prohibited. So they have requested that these double-height garages added into the design standards and permitted, but we aren't limiting them. And so part of your backup is the draft development agreement, that's gonna come back to you for approval on October second, the second reading of this, if you're inclined to approve it. And within that, it limits it to twenty percent of the homes in sections two one A and two one B, and that equals thirty-two houses. And so that would be the most number of houses that could have these double-height garages. I know the picture's a little small, maybe, if you have your backup in front of you, you can zoom in on it. But there, there are product out there now that have, that is already built with those. And so they're just seeking to do a few more within section two, and like I said, it's up to thirty-two houses.
Any questions, council?
Scott, did you say that we already have some that are double-height? And this is the size that fits like an RV or a travel?
Some, probably, maybe not those massive RVs, I don't know the exact dimensions of them. We refer to them as, or the, you know, all the code that we're writing refers on the dou- double-height garage, but I don't think they're technically even double-height. They're just like extra tall. From my understanding, sometimes people with oversized pickup trucks will purchase it. For Richmond American, it's actually their higher-value homes, like the, they have their models that are normal garages, and then ones with the, these double heights, and those are a higher price point. So they do sell at a premium, but they are limited, like I said, to thirty-two houses in section two. And Manor Heights has five of, five sections in it. So it's really just one small area of the whole community that would have these.
And from the picture, it kinda shows that it widens the driveway a lot more. Is that something that we would have within our ordinances, or is that what, I guess, their?
We do have a standard, a driveway standard, and so the minimum width of a driveway is twelve feet, eighteen is preferred, twenty-five is the max. And so that's, that isn't modified by this PUD or by anything, so the, the home builder would follow those standards.
Other questions?
Scott, are there any restrictions on the facade for any of those?
There are, so, within sections two through five, it's not the original one that connects to Presidential Glen. They follow these design standards that are in the PUD, and so they have a, and within the development agreement, there's a requirement that thirty percent of the front be masonry, which is stone brick or stucco. And then the rest is governed by the design standards that are in the PUD, but also in their development agreement for sort of offsets and architectural features on each home.
Thank you. It's a silly question, I guess it's just a, a basic one, kinda like, why? Why did they choose to make this part of a an added amenity or an option? What, was there a reason behind adding this versatility, this diverse style? I know we have it already somewhere else, that, that was really new to me, and so now I'm going back through the neighborhood to figure it out. Cuz I haven't noticed that before here, I have seen them before, but I haven't seen it here in Manor, I don't think. But I guess it was just a question of why bringing that into one of our phases for this.
My hand, I'm sorry to speak for the builder, but there's a market for it, I mean, that's all I can assume, like, they're selling. I mean, they wanted to do more, but just for the, the, you know, the aesthetics of when you're when you're on the road, you don't want necessarily everything to be garages, that's why we put up the limit of twenty percent within section two, so thirty-two houses. But the home builder, they were selling them, are continuing to sell them.
No, that's a good answer, I mean, knowing that there's a need for it and people do want it, that makes sense. I, I see with our, our buildings and things like that, our Texas cars and our Texas-sized cars, they need a place to go, and it's not nice to have hail damage on your fifty thousand-plus car. Because there's no roof to put it over. But also even having a space to put it so they're not in the streets, I know that that's a new law that's enforcing. So, okay, but no, that's good, that's good enough for me, thank you.
It's also good for boats and trailers as well.
Correct. Mister Robert, you have one minute and forty-one seconds of your time. I would like to argue that time, but I need for you to be respectful of the people that are here and the people that's with you. Okay, so if there's something that you would like for us to pull up, I need for you to do it with respectful communication. Happy to hear you, every single time you sign up, have no problem with that. Just asking you to respect the expectations here and be respectful in your communication, have no problem with you talking and doing that, can you do that?
Well, I appreciate that, Mister Mayor, some of the things.
My question first.
Pardon me?
Can you do that?
Can I be respectful?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's a subjective word, is it not? Do you have some policy that says what being respectful is, perhaps?
Your time has started.
I want to be respectful, but when you don't put things up to see, that makes me frustrated. See these little postage stamps in here, this is exactly what our forefathers do not want. They don't want little dinky little postage stamp things, stamp-sized things, calling them parks. They want all those together to be a big park that we can do things at. I don't see any parking by any of these quote parks. I don't see any mention about Parkland in Lou fees. Open space does not equal Parkland. If you look in the codes, it says open space or, O R Parkland. That is used as a disjunctive word, meaning it's this or that, they don't equal each other. O S, open space, does not equal Parkland. What is this little dinky little dot there on the lower right? I mean, seriously, that's one point acres of what? Who's gonna go there? Now, here's an important thing, commercially, they have over ten acres, we need a plaza there. That's what it says in our codes, every commercial development over ten acres has to put a plaza in. Then we're gonna start having a city that's worth something. But you guys have to enforce these things, you have to get the two hundred thousand from Okra. She said she was gonna pay it on her first thing, I will give her the video of that and show her. These people here, they need a plaza, we don't need Scott Dunlop trying to take the plazas away from H E B, Monarch Ranch, and this new development, Caroline.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that, for letting us.
All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing on item number five.
Well, a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace, is there a second?
Like, second?
Uh, any questions to the motion? No questions to the motion? Questions? Motion passes, thank you. Conduct a public hearing on orders, resounding two lots on point nine seven acres, more or less. At one oh eight West Voice, one oh four West Voice, Maine of Texas, from Single Family, S F one, two downtown business, and Mister Robert.
Thank, thank you, Mister Mayor, is it possible to see the elevation of the side of the building? Possible, that'd be good. We seem to have forgotten that this is a historic district here, and there's nothing historic about this gross three-story box. There we go, that last one's fine, look at that, do we want that in our neighborhood? There's nothing historic about this, this ugly, modern Austin stuff, we don't want that here. You guys talk about live, work, play, do you think the people that are gonna work here can afford to live above it? This is basically, this is a B and B for this Korean land developer. They've had these people come down and talk at the zoning commissions and other things, they are just like lackeys. They don't know what the heck's going on. When zoning says, well, what are your plans to develop in Manor, they don't know. This is a two hundred and fifty million dollar real estate conglomerate investment trust from Korea, nothing against Koreans. The average investor invests twenty thousand dollars, they could care less about us. This needs to stay a neighborhood, we need to not call this downtown, you don't use that word down here in old manner. This should be neighborhood business, just like Mister Chavez did with his beauty shop. We don't need this, this will be an Airbnb for these Korean executives to come down for South by Southwest. This whole notion of live, work, play is ridiculous. Play where? On the swing set at Jenny Lane? In the empty park by Art Park, the vacant lot, we're gonna play there too? Live, work, play is a fallacy, the comprehensive plan is a joke. Everything related to downtown that has to do with Parsons Street needs to be cleansed, thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Or Mister Dunlop?
So this zoning request has come before you, it was postponed at the August sixteenth meeting. Planning Commission had postponed it at their meeting back in August, cuz they wanted additional renderings, which were provided by the developer. I mean, these renderings, the actual buildings themselves, I mean, they're just sort of there for the massing, to show like what is feasible in terms of, you know, height and bulk and the setbacks and all that, it's not a final, you know, building permit. You know, they haven't submitted any of that yet. You know, they haven't submitted any of that yet. Um, it was more, it, they're providing more, uh, for your all's consideration to show the potential of the property. Uh, and when you're considering this rezoning case. Um, the planning commission, they did recommend approval, uh, for when you get to your action. Um, but yes, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, this back door is the other project we already approved, that's under construction, just so you can be aware of what's in that area.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions, council? Oh, go ahead, sir.
I was gonna remind you on one thing, um, the downtown plan that's coming up in another agenda item, uh, before you tonight. Um, if there's a possibility also, if we complete that downtown plan and they suggest that we have some. Um, some comprehensive, um, planning for downtown. Uh, architectural, design standards. That those might affect these buildings coming up too, just depending on the timing of the construction of those buildings. So, if they got their plans in before those design standards, then they wouldn't apply. But if we had those design standards in before they, um, uh, applied for their permit, then they would. So that's something also to consider.
Is there a recommendation in regards to that?
I, I wouldn't hold up anything, um, because it's a significant investment that these people are talking about bringing to downtown. Uh, but I just hold that out as, the quicker we can get the downtown plan in place. Uh, the more it's gonna be helpful in, in, uh, you know, approval of these projects and, and doing what we want to. Uh, with the look of our downtown.
Other questions, council members, comments? Take a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing on item number six.
I have a motion for my councilwoman Wallace, is there a second?
I second.
Second by councilwoman, any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion, being none, all in favor? Pose, motion passes unanimously. All right, move right along, all the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-inspired by council. We may enact the one motion, there will be no separate discussion on items requested by Maynor. Uh, excuse me, by the mayor, uh, or council member, in which event, uh, the item will be moved from the consent agenda to consent separately. We have a motion on for consent agenda, or any item that someone wants to pull out. All right, consideration discussion, possible action on, uh, to approve city council minutes. September sixth, twenty twenty-three, city council report, September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, city council special call session. September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, special call session. Number eight, consideration discussion, possible action on the second August, twenty twenty-three, department reports, and we're now in consideration discussion. Possible action on license and maintenance agreement with Lagos Residential Community Inc. for construction, improvement, installation, and maintenance of landscaping.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Uh, motion for my councilman Moran, is there a second?
I second.
Second by councilwoman Wallace, any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Being none, all in favor? Pose, motion pass. Let's see. Want to jump to number eighteen? Consideration, discussion, and possible action on renewing or rerate medical cost projection form for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Uh, between City of Maynor and the health insurance pool, Texas Health Benefits Pool. And authorize, authorize city manager execute, execute the, um, rerate notice and benefits form.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, sorry, I was not prepared. Like, wait, that's amazing. Um, so as. Let me get the right one. So, this year, I'm giving you the medical cost projection for the member, um, options for T M L Health. It's staff recommendation to go with option number one, which is a fourteen point eight-six increase from last year. And the difference on this one is a thousand dollars on the move, which is the maximum out of pocket for employees. With that being said, the reason behind it is T M L is no longer carrying our E A P, which is our, um, employee assistance program. So, we'll have to go for second party on that one, and I've already been working on that as well, so, that's a recommendation.
Any questions, council members?
And this is just the medical part, right?
Medical and dental, vision is separate, that contract comes up next year.
Thank you.
This doesn't have an impact on the budget, right?
No, it should have to.
Other questions, council members?
Has the, um, the E A P portion already been? Um, is it still ongoing, available, or will that?
It is cur- currently, yes, we will be losing it, um, by the end of October, so I will be back at council next.
Mayor and Council, on your motion, you do have to, um, state what option staff is recommending. That's not in the backups.
I don't see a recommendation.
So the only difference Tracy is the deductibles? No, it's the maximum out of pocket, the move, it went from four thousand to five thousand. The deductible stays the same, same, um, emergency rooms. Primary cares, it all stays the same.
And you're asking for an option one, two, three, or four, correct?
Correct.
And like I said, there's no staff recommendation.
The staff recommendation is on there, it, it does, it doesn't list the option.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Oh, sorry, yes, it is option one, any of the other ones will increase the deductibles. And it changes out of top, the, out of, out of network deductibles as well.
Any questions? And what was the last year again?
I'm sorry?
What was the option last year?
Last year was the one on top to the left, where it says twenty-two, twenty-three, the six, hundred and sixty, yeah.
Do we have a motion for questions?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve and renew the re- rerate medical cost projection. For form, for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Between the City of Maynor and the Health Insurance Pool. To Texas Health Benefits Pool and authorize the city manager to execute. The rerate notice and benefits verification form for option number one.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Uh, motion forward by councilwoman Wallace, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilwoman, any questions to the motion? Is there a total dollar increase that, um, you all can share with us? If that fourteen point eight percent looks like?
Ninety-nine dollars.
Um, annualized for everyone, what does that look like?
Each one. Nine thousand nine dollars.
Per person? What are you talking about, across the board?
Across the board, like, for each person?
For each person.
Hundred and eight thousand?
Increase from last year, for the year.
And that would be handling.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then guarantee on the, the rates, you're not changing next year, but go up again?
Honestly, more than likely will go up, but we're gonna look at other options.
And you say they already have a budget?
Mm-hmm, it's already budgeted, at sixteen percent. Which is the one up on the left, if you look, the difference from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, that's the sixteen percent increase. We're gonna opt to go with the fourteen point eight.
Any other questions?
Was the difference of that be, um, made up when you add the E A P services?
So most E A P services, just to give you, um, a heads up, will be for the entire staff and council. Five thousand or less for the year.
We'll bring that back to you.
October second. I'm already ready.
Questions, comments? Being none, all in favor? Pose, motion pass, thank you. We'll go backwards to seventeen. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on a lease contract for, uh, funding of city or police vehicles.
Mayor Council, uh, before you is the lease contracts, um, for funding for the police vehicles. These, these vehicles were pre-approved, um, on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. The vehicles are just now finally coming in to, uh, into our hands for off-the-production lines. Um, we have five police vehicles, one patrol sergeant vehicle, total is four hundred ninety-five thousand eighty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. Um, below you, on the attachments, you have three bids. Uh, one from Frontier Bank, the second from Government Capital, and the third from Frost Bank. Um, you have listed there the interest rates as well as the annual payments, uh, they are for, um, five-year leases. Um, and it is staff's, uh, recommendation towards lease contract to Frost Bank.
Questions, comments, or motion?
Is this in our twenty twenty-three budget or twenty twenty-four?
This will be for the incoming, uh, in the incoming year. Fiscal year twenty-three. And this amount was, the scheduled payment is, was budgeted and approved in this current budget.
That's what I was gonna make sure that question was clear, that when the vehicle was wanted, able to be delivered, the funds were set aside, but it wasn't.
Yes, sir, correct.
Thank you, that answered me.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve and award the lease contract to Frost Bank. And authorize the city manager to execute the final contract after legal review.
Uh, motion on the forum, um, my councilwoman Wallace, is there a second?
I second.
Second by councilman Moran, no, any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Being none, all in favor? Pose, motion pass. Um. Number. Uh, for number nineteen, uh, we'd like to go into executive session to see, uh, legal counsel. Um, for that one. So, city council, we're now convening executive session pursuant to provisions of chapter five five one Texas government code. In course with authority contained in section five five one point zero seven one, five five one point zero eight seven. Uh, Texas government code, section one point zero five two, displaying the first concept, uh, conduct, so the legal counsel regarding. Uh, compensation benefits and city council members. City council, we're now reconvene to open session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five-five-one Texas government code and take action, if any, on items discussed. In executive session. Okay. All right, the. All right. We're going to return back to our regular agenda. Picking up at item number ten. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on the amendments to a statement of work number nine, Cottonwood Creek Water Treatment Plant, Phase Three Project.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This project is a resubmission of a grant application for the Phase Three wastewater treatment plant in the Cottonwood Basin. This is the third phase at two hundred thousand gallons per day. So this would take the total plant capacity up to six hundred thousand gallons per day. There was an application package that was assembled previously for this project, but it was prior to acquisition of the property. Now that the acquisition has been completed, it can be made under this fiscal year and submitted to EDA for potential grant funding. So we've been working in concert with Gandalf Burris and Grant Development Services on the scope and scale, what needs to be done for this submittal. And that's what this authorization is for, is to update everything to current plans and represent what's going in the ground on Phase Two, as well as comply with the requirements for the Phase Three EDA application.
Okay. Questions or motion?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve an award statement of work number nine B to George Butler Associates, Inc. Mayor Council like to make a motion that we approve an award statement of work number nine B to George Butler Associates, Inc. With the Cottonwood Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Phase Three Improvement Projects, an amount of eight thousand, one hundred dollars and zero cents.
Well, motion on the floor by councilman Maran, is there a second?
My second.
Second by councilwoman Wallace, any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Been none, all in favor? Pose. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, consideration discussion, possible action on ordinance levy and abalone taxes for the use and support of municipal government of main city that made of a fiscal year. Begin October first, twenty twenty-three to end uh, ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, is any questions, uh, council on this item? Any questions? I'll take uh, either questions or a motion unless Ms. Collins has anything you want to say or just there for question.
I'm just here for questions.
Okay. Take questions on motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that um, the property tax rate be decreased by the adoption of the tax rate of zero point six, seven, eight, nine on each hundred dollar valuation of property, which is effectively a ten point zero three decrease in the tax rate.
Uh, motion on the floor by council, uh.
The ordinance number, please.
And that we approve ordinance numbers seven, one, six for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four property tax rate.
Uh, motion on the floor by council, uh, councilwoman, is there a second?
My second.
Second by councilmember, I know any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Been none, all in favor? Oppose? Motion is five to two.
Okay. Yeah, okay, do it again, please.
All in favor? Oppose? Five, two.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. Moving forward, uh, number. Twelve, consideration discussion on possible action on ordinance adopting annual budget for city of Maynor for fiscal year begin October first, twenty twenty-three and attempt uh, ending September third, twenty twenty-four, uh, any questions or comments about the budget? No questions, comments on the budget? I'll take my motion for comments.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number seven, one, eight, adopting the annual budget for the city of Maynor for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-three and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Uh, motion on the floor by councilwoman, is there a second?
My second.
Second by councilmember, I know any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Been none, all in favor? Pose. Motion passes. Number fourteen, first reading, consider uh, consideration discussion, possible action on ordinance, uh, amending chapter fourteen zoning, uh, uh, the main code ordinance to modify provisions for the residential land use table related to single family attached two units and single family attached three or more use industrialized housing standards and office commercial industrial architecture standards. Is there any other questions before Mr. Dunlap? I'll take questions to him or a motion.
Mayor Council like to make a motion that we approve the first reading of an ordinance for the Okra Track Development Final Plan Unit Development Site Plan, three hundred and thirty-one lots on.
Let's start taking. I'm like, I don't, I don't think we did Oprah. It's coming up.
Mayor Council, I make them, make a motion that we approve the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter fourteen. Zoning of the code of ordinance of the city of Maynor, Texas by providing for amendments to the residential land use table, moving regulations for industrialized housing from chapter fourteen zoning to a standalone section of the code ordinances, modifying office, commercial, industrial, institutional, architectural standards, providing an effective, effective date savings severability and open meeting clauses and providing for related matters.
Uh, we have a motion for my councilmember, is there a second?
My second.
Second by councilwoman Wallace, any uh, questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Been none, all in favor? Pose, motion passes. Number fourteen, consideration, first reading, consideration discussion, possible action on ordinance for the Okra Track Development Final Plan Unit Development Site Plan, three hundred and thirty-one lots on one hundred and thirteen point four acres more or less and being located at one four four, one eight north, FM nine, seven, three, Maynor, Texas. Are any questions for Mr. Dunlap or our developer? Or motion on the floor?
If I may, sorry, uh, if you're inclined to approve it, um, I just wanted to note in the, the background summary portion is where the planning commission recommendations were. So if you wanted to agree with those, uh, we'd also read those into your motion or modify or add.
With modifications.
So, uh, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, the one through four.
Four, read those out. Okay. Mayor Council like to make a motion that we approve the first reading of an ordinance for the Okra Track Development Final Plan Unit Development Site Plan, three hundred and thirty-one lots on one hundred and thirteen point four acres more or less and being located at fourteen, four, eighteen, north FM nine, seven, three, Maynor, Texas with modifications of amenity features are not within detention, playscapes have shaded structures, add few additional parking spaces and dark park is fenced.
Well, motion on the floor by councilman Maran, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by, I didn't see that, who that councilwoman, where, any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Um, right, right, yeah, is that in line with you, I heard you say, okay. Uh, no questions, all in favor? Pose, motion passes. Moving right on, item number fifteen. First reading, um, for uh, consideration discussion, a possible action on ordinance for Main Heights, uh, carry on, subdivision plan unit P U D amendment located at one, three, two, zero, one, Oakwood, Texas. Uh, any questions related to that? Need anything on it, Dunlap?
No, there were no modification, planning commission, uh, voted to approve this one without changes.
Any questions, comments? I'll take a motion.
Mayor Council like to make a motion that we approve the first reading of an ordinance, amending ordinance five thirty-four to modify the planned unit development, land use plan for the Maynor Heights Development. Rezoning from planned unit development, P U D to planned unit development.
We have motion for councilmember, is there a second?
My second.
Second by councilwoman Wallace, any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Been none, all in favor? Pose, motion passes. All right. Number sixteen, first reading, uh, consideration discussion, possible action on ordinance rezoning two lots on point two nine, seven acres more or less at one oh eight West Boys, one oh four West Boys, Maynor, Texas from single families of one to downtown business, meaning questions remaining for Mr. Dunlap or this was approved five oh, um, by P N Z? Any questions or a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning two lots on point two nine, seven acres more or less at one oh eight West Boys and one oh four West Boys Street, Maynor, Texas from single family S F one to downtown business D B.
Well, motion for by councilwoman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilwoman, where, any questions to the motion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, if this is not the right one, please correct me, but um, if the updates to our downtown business, um, ordinances and what that looks like, if it's approved today, then it would be under, it would just be grandfathered in for those and then we, we would just have to hope that the builders or the developers would want to comply with our new standard.
Uh, you'd have a couple avenues, so right now, when we do have architectural standards, you see the zoning ordinance, there was just sort of the exemption for articulation for buildings less than a thousand square feet. But it's same art, um, architectural standards throughout the city, uh, within our historic district, we do regulate building materials, um, so that is different um, than the rest of the city unless there's development agreement, um, so these buildings and this one specifically, with it, if you approve it as downtown business, um, a hundred percent of the front facade and street side facade have to be masonry, which is stone brick or stucco, and the building overall has to be ninety percent. So there is a really high mason requirement, um, that they would have to meet, but in terms of their, you know, balconies, our, um, architectural finishes, um, there really isn't specification on that, uh, if they do the downtown strategic plan that is recommended, um, you probably would have to have actually another consultant come in to do those, um, because we need architects for that, we don't have any architects on staff. Um, so it probably would actually be a while, I'm assuming with the, the strategic plan, it would be one of the recommendations in the plan and then we go and kind of probably consult and have someone draft that, so it's pretty unlikely unless this project is significantly delayed, um, that they would fall under, you know, a new plan. Um, but if there was an instance where they did file and they sort of vested under current codes and you did want to see them under newer codes and depending on what they have, like if they still are working on a, you know, a, a tax incentive agreement or development agreement, you can put into the development agreement that they have to, you know, follow, you know, newer architectural standards. Um, so really it is a matter of timing, kind of Mr. Jones mentioned, it's just when they file, where they're at and when those standards come in.
Other questions?
Um, so are, are we still following the same process where, um, getting the zoning done first before they file? Is that, okay, before we see anything else?
Right, yeah, they generally don't do like full engineer plans and architectural plans if they don't have their zoning as their base entitlement because, um, you know, they don't want to spend the thousands or tens of thousands of dollars to do all that, um, to not have it provided. Um, what they do do is provide the renderings that they have, um, which were done by sort of an architectural design firm to show that what they're proposing is feasible on the size property. Um, so they're not just maybe requesting zoning, but like, you know, big question mark of whether it can actually be developed, they're actually showing there's a developable project that they can do. Um, but the actual design work and site planning and all the engineering comes a little bit later and that's all administrative unless they request variances.
Other questions? Then, uh, I think we have a motion on the floor, so all in favor? Pose, motion passes. All right. Jumping down to the number nineteen. Yeah, uh, consideration discussion, possible action regarding, uh, compensation, uh, benefits for, uh, city council members. Um, so you know, council in, I think, twenty twenty, uh, the vote is voted to remove language out of the charter in regards to, um, uh, city council members not being able to be paid or the, or their decision, uh, controlling, their decision controlling whether, uh, we're paid or not, having how much. Um, so that language was removed, um, by the voters in twenty twenty and, uh, now we are at the space now of making a decision in regards to, um, compensation benefits, um, what that looks like for, for us and what, what happens around that, so we've had several meetings about that, um, discussions, workshops, a lot of information presented, so, um, I will entertain, um, a discussion, a motion, um, or, um, why does it postpone it? Or additional direction, um, to city staff at this moment.
What is the proper language to have a discussion?
Just start talking. Answer your question either to, to council or to, um, Ms. Tracy.
Um, my first question would be, um, is it, would it be something that would just kind of continue on when the compensation begins? I would assume, I guess, in the new fiscal year, would it be something just kind of like with the health benefits, do you have to like renew it every year? Or just make sure that it's, or that they go on until maybe a new charter says different?
Correct.
Is that correct to the second one, right?
Yes, it would just keep going unless you put in provision that there's a resolution or something like that gets in place and it states it's this, correct?
Yes, that is correct, or until, um, city council would like to bring it up again to discuss lowering or upping or canceling. So anytime council wants to bring it up again as well. Apologies, Veronica Rivera is assistant city attorney.
I have a question. Since we have tried to go the ad hoc route to have community members give their input on this and that did not work out so well due to a lack of participation.
That was our attempt to be transparent.
We were trying to be transparent as to what was to be done. It was, um, brought up before by a charter review committee to have council receive, um, a stipend for being on council for two meetings a month, basically. Um, that was voted down, however, the duties of council have been extended as of that timeframe that that was submitted. More is required of council at this time. So I would, um, like to, I guess, put it out there for the fellow council members and the mayor. Um, do we believe that council should get some kind of compensation for the time that it's taken, especially when council members have to leave their current jobs in order to do this job? Um, when they have to take time from work to go to attend meetings and things of that nature. Um, and also our trainings that we have to be a part of as well. Do we feel like council should and the mayor should get a stipend for that, um, opening up the tape, the floor for, um, any discussion?
Well, one recommendation would be not to call it a stipend, it would be compensation.
Okay, compensation, I re, I rephrased my statement.
So, um, I made my recommendation, um, on what that pay would look like for, uh, each council member along with our mayor as well. Um, I recommended twenty-five hundred. Not to exceed twenty-five hundred, um, per council member and not to exceed thirty-five hundred for the mayor. I took into consideration, um, just to kind of piggyback on councilwoman's Wallace, um, statements on, um, not just because of extensive times during council meetings, but additional, uh, meetings. But additional uh meetings, workshops, taking off from work. Um sacrificing um our jobs paid. When there is not any paid time off. In addition to a variety of other meetings that are that are actually needed. To keep our city progressing and moving forward. And um these are things that are crucial to the city and um. Along with using our own transportation as well. So we we still have, and it's gonna get, it's gonna grow even more, there's gonna be more requirements. Will will be put in extensive situations where we would have to continue on making these sacrifices as well. Um so just to put on the record, that is actually my recommendation.
Mayor Proton, can you elaborate? Is it twenty-five hundred per month, per week, per council meeting?
I'm sorry, that would be per per month.
I hear you saying not to exceed twenty-five hundred per month. An amount to not exceed twenty-five hundred per month, council members, an amount not to exceed thirty-five hundred a month for a mayor. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Uh other questions, comments?
Could you tell us what other cities like, you know, with our population, what they're doing?
Um I don't have that in front of me, I believe we've had it prior. And what I, and the sheet that I used were the surrounding cities that we used in our compensation study as well, the exact same ones.
Other questions, comments?
Okay, according to the information that we were given before. Okay.
If that was given in executive session.
It was given to the budget committee.
Okay, good, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's see. Was the closest to us. Okay, the city of Hutto. Has thirty-seven thousand. Population of thirty-seven thousand with a annual operating budget. Of forty-three million and they get, the mayor gets five hundred and the council gets four hundred.
Is that per meeting?
Per. It doesn't say that on here, but I I think that it's per meeting.
That sounds correct.
Or per month, I think it may be per month.
Now, this was twenty-two, twenty-three, the new budgets are coming out as well. And I did see an increase across the board.
Georgetown. Is eighteen hundred for the mayor and fourteen hundred per council member. Round Rock is twelve thousand per for the mayor and nine thousand per council member.
That's per year.
Per year. Taylor. Is seven fifty per meeting per ma- for the mayor and five hundred per meeting. For council.
You say that was per meeting? Say that with numbers again?
Uh it doesn't, uh okay, for uh. Let's see. Round Rock is twelve thousand.
What are the last one you said?
Taylor is seven fifty per meeting for the mayor and five hundred per meeting for council. Seven fifty for the mayor and five hundred for council.
And that's prior to the ad hoc meeting, the committee they had, that's prior to.
Do we know what they did afterwards?
I do have it on my desk, I don't have it in front of me. Um they did not go with the recommendations from the committee.
They go higher.
They did, went higher.
Thank you for that information, Councilwoman Wallace. And uh Tracy, everyone else. So um the item is to give direction regarding compensation and benefit, so. How would you all like to proceed with that?
I'm ready to vote.
Mayor, council members, depending on what the recommendation is, we would need to bring it back as an ordinance. We don't have anything in the backup right now with that amount, so uh again, it's. You can make your motion uh so that we can then bring it back to you for um as an ordinance.
And uh what would need to be in the motion for that?
Mayor, council, I'd like to make a motion that we. What do you call it, impose a um. Provide city council compensation of twenty-five hundred per council member monthly. And thirty-five hundred for the mayor monthly.
I'm sorry. Start date.
If we have to bring it back as an ordinance. It would be for the next fiscal year.
Fiscal. October one.
Do you wanna present it on the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Would you like, okay, which is October second?
Which is October second, so start date of, what's the next meeting in October?
October second.
Okay, so we would start on October second.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim, here, any questions to the motion? This would be a time if you have a different amount or any other discussion to do that before the vote, so. Any questions to the motion?
I would just like to um mention that that's not included in our current budget, correct? Since we did not have amounts, so I just wanna make sure everybody knows that. We will have to amend the budget if this vote goes.
At that amount, we're talking about less than. Three hundred K. Up to uh no more than, we're talking no more than two, three hundred K. If that's correct.
It's two hundred twenty-two thousand.
I was a rough estimate, two hundred and. So that's a total amount as proposed, uh uh two hundred and twenty-two thousand.
That won't include employer tax, which would be recommended.
That's true, cuz that'll be, there'll be also an increase to the employer paid portion for the city.
Is that twenty percent?
Kind of depends on what you put down. Kind of depends on what you put down, how many dependents and all that stuff, so roughly twenty, I would do twenty-four percent. Roughly.
So that means that the city will go ahead and take the taxes out and we don't have to do that ourselves, right?
I suppose if that's what you, if that's the direction, yes. It could be done either way, uh that that's how I've seen it, either way, either we would do a ten ninety-nine or we could do a W two.
I'd rather do the W two for me, please.
Well, it's all or none.
Well, I recommend the W two.
Well, let's have some more discussion about that.
You're having discussions right now on the motion that's being made, and again, we'll bring you an ordinance. Where that we discuss internally where your city staff um for a recommendation.
Other questions? If we do one point two four percent, if we multiply that one point two four. That puts it at two seventy-five, two eighty, two hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. If we do it with the twenty-four percent. Close, right, wrong, maybe?
Yes, it's close, but then uh I guess my question, I don't know if I can have a question, is is there a second portion to this? Well, we're talking about compensation, but then that says benefits, so is there an additional something that's added?
Uh my understanding was that was E EAP stuff, it wasn't necessarily life insurance, health.
Just the EAP, and we already offer that as well, um as far as health benefits, you would physically have to work at the city. At least a minimum of one thousand two hundred fifty hours to be able to. And that would, that's just going with TMRS, it's got nine, not even Texas Health.
No other question.
Okay, um alright, so we have motion on the floor um regarding compensation. Uh at twenty-five hundred per month for um is it provide or up to as recommended by the Mayor Pro Tim? Just getting clarification from the motion.
I think I said provide.
Provide, okay, provide twenty-five hundred per month for uh council members and thirty-five hundred per month um for the mayor. Beginning uh in the next fiscal year, October the second, twenty twenty-three. That's the motion on the floor, no additional questions, comments?
If you can just add to the motion that um directing city to bring back an ordinance with that information.
Uh I would like to amend my motion to direct city staff to come back with an ordinance.
October second.
October second with the recommendation.
Mayor Pro Tim here, I think you second that.
I second.
Alright, so twenty-five hundred per month for city council, thirty-five hundred, a hundred per month for mayor. Fiscal year beginning in October, um for the next fiscal year, begin October second. Um and directing staff to bring back a um city ordinance. Um at the October second meeting, alright, um everybody's got their words in, alright, all in favor? Pose. Motion passed six one. Moving on to number twenty. Consideration discussion possible action regarding authorization of uh. Authorizing the city manager to select a consultant and negotiate the and execute a legal agreement to perform services pursuant to. The August twenty twen- uh twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three request for a proposal. Uh scope of services solicited under the terms and conditions for downtown strategic plan, consulting services for a city manager. And in instance, uh contract cannot be negotiated and or terms agreed to by the parties then to hire and alternate. Alternate to perform the contract services subject to legal review.
Yeah, mayor and council members, thank you. Um we um put out a request for. A proposal on the um downtown strategic plan on August twenty-fifth. And advertised it in the local paper and the Austin paper and uh solicited that. Uh those proposals and received three um proposals back. And I think you have those in, copies of those in your package. The three uh proposed consultants were Design Workshop, um Civic, uh excuse me, Catalyst. And uh Lionheart Places. And uh we have a, we put together a selection committee. Uh composed of um two departments heads here, me and and Scott Dunlop. And the city manager and then um one of the vice presidents at Opportunity Austin. Who's head of economic development there, um as well as one of our economic development committee, economic development. But uh heads up in Flugerville and um asked for their input um to help rate these proposals. Uh we got those back and um I would ask you tonight to um. Enable the city manager to to um basically pick one of these, actually to pick two of them. Um we're gonna ask you to to authorize him to pick a uh. A first and a second place, basically. Uh that's just in case we get bogged down in negotiations and are unable. Uh he's unable to negotiate with the first choice that we wouldn't, rather than having to come back to you a second time. You would enable him to go ahead and negotiate a contract with the second choice. Um so the motion uh would entail you authorizing the city manager to. Uh pick a consultant and an alternate um to negotiate. And execute a contract with for downtown strategic plan consulting services.
Uh questions, comments?
And I've been over these proposals pretty well, and I answered most of the questions that you have on them. I did receive feedback from all three of the companies, they all called me and asked me plenty of questions, as you can imagine. Um about the proposal itself and answered all of them that that they asked me and. You know, had quite a few conversations um over the two-week period before they sent their proposals in, so. Had a lot of good feedback and a lot of interest, they were all very interested in in uh proposing services for the city. And and doing the work.
I don't have anything in my packet, do you guys?
Yeah, no, it didn't get in there.
You you can get them in there?
Mm-mm.
Mayor and council, I apologize, I failed to send that separately, cause it was not part of the public packet. And we were gonna send those separately, so that is my fault.
So you say you have three, and you're, you're asking us to have, um, to authorize city manager, um, and, uh, I guess after the team, has the team already rated the top three?
I'm sorry?
Has the, has the team already ra- rated the top three?
Yeah, yes, yeah, the team, team's already rated them and, um, provided that information to the city manager earlier today, he's already rated his as well, he has all that information, so he's ready to make a decision. So, we wanted to, of course, give you all the information, I apologize, we didn't have that in your packets, but wanted to give you all the information, but, you know, rather, rather than keep having y'all have to be involved and looking through all the proposals and all that kind of stuff and answer all the questions on the proposals and stuff, we wanted to leave that up to the city manager and leave it up to, as, as we discussed earlier, mayor, um, you know, I sent it out to the professionals that have downtown experience, um, with, with those types of proposals, so we left it, uh, up to that group of professionals to rate these particular consultants that do this all the time, so that's kind of where we, where we, uh, came up, and I, and I did a rating system, basically, that was, um, if, if you, if you look at the, the strategic, um, method that we used, we used, um, we used a criteria that was based on their applicability to, um, you know, the experience level and, uh, the, the projects that they'd completed in the past and those things, at the very bottom was price, so.
Could I recommend this? That we, we bring it back maybe on the second, just so they have a chance to go through them? Cause I think if, if it was there, then maybe people might feel comfortable.
Yeah, I've got more copies over there, I could go get and send it around, but, yeah, we, that'd be, that'd be perfectly fine, I can bring it back and make sure that y'all have it in your package and get a chance to look at each proposal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I apologize for that, I thought they were gonna be in, in there.
No, it happens sometimes, no worry. Uh, council members, um, you got files out, or do you want to take the time now? Well, I think you can, you can let me know in your motion.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we bring back item number twenty on the October second council meeting. Postpone item number twenty to the October second council meeting.
Uh, motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilmember Miranda, any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion, being that all in favor? Propose, motion passes, thank Mr. Jones.
Yeah.
City council now reconvened to its action pursuant to revision of chapter five five one Texas government code in accordance with the authority contained in section five five one point zero seven ones, section five five one point zero eight seven Texas government code, section one point zero five discipline rules of professional conduct to consult with the legal counsel regarding the main springs project and section five five one point zero seven one, six five five one point zero seven two Texas government code, section one point zero five Texas discipline rules of professional conduct to consult with the legal counsel regarding the resolution of city and mayor of Texas, authorize the purchase of purchase and closing of real property for twenty million, um, eight hundred thousand plus closing files provided for approval of real estate purchase contract and amendment to contract unauthorized, the ma- authorized the mayor or city council, a city manager to execute any and all contracts and documents necessary to purchase and close on the purchase of a property identified here in, here in, provided for related matters.
City Council would now convene to open session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one Texas government program and take action if any on items discussed in an enclosed executive session. Number twenty-one consideration and discussion of possible action or resolution of city of main of Texas authorize the purchase and close a real property for twenty point eight million dollars plus closing costs provided for approval of real estate purchase contract. And amendment to the contract and authorizing the mayor of city count, uh city manager to execute any and all contracts and documents necessary to purchase and close on the property. Uh purchase of the property identified herein and provide for related matters. Is there a motion on the floor? Is there any questions? Any questions, council?
Um.
Yeah, question?
We're, yeah, we're not authorizing the the resolution, right? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
That was the change that was made so that you can read the motion or the recommendation if that's what your motion. On the agenda, yes. Right there with Aaron's point.
Okay. Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one authorizing the. Okay. Okay, authorizing the purchase and closing of real property for twenty million eight hundred thousand dollars plus closing costs. Providing for approval of the real estate purchase contract and an ed- amendment to the contract. And providing for related matters. Authorizing the city manager to execute the contract. Amendment to the contract.
Is it authorizing the mayor or the city manager or just city manager?
The mayor or the city manager.
Okay. We have a motion on for by councilman Wallace. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by councilman, uh councilman Ryan. No any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? No questions to the motion, all in favor? Puls, uh motion passes five to one. Um four to one, one, two, three, four, five. Okay. Um five to one, uh motion passes and this means adjourn.